Email such comments to the City Secretary at citiesecretary@hylandvillage.org by 1:00 PM on Tuesday, March the 9th. And I will let the record know now that we have no comments. So, we are going to get started. We're going to get an update on information services, operations and projects by Ms. Sunny Lindsay.
I play like the Price is Right music when she walks up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Yes, so, as you know, we've, every month, you know, you all have been enjoying some rip-roaring and thrilling PowerPoint presentations. And so, I was inspired by the Mayor's State of the City video and decided, and begged, begged, the communications team to help me do a video in two days. So, thank you very much to them. And also, as you all know, I do fully believe in bribing. So, this is be kind to your IS professionals because sometimes it can be intense. So, Andrew, please take it away.
Technology is everywhere.
It is used by every employee and in every job. Every resident uses technology when they interact with the city, from answering phones to automation. The IS department is responsible for just about everything with the processor chip. We support mobile devices, mobile apps, desktops, laptops, printers, copiers, scanners, fax machines, telephones and network. It is used by every employee and in every job. Every resident uses technology when they interact with the city, from answering phones to automation. The IS department is responsible for just about everything with the processor chip. We support mobile devices, mobile apps, desktops, laptops, printers, copiers, scanners, fax machines, telephones and network, data storage, cybersecurity and over 50 types of software and cameras. We've created over 30 custom business automation workflows that have saved hundreds of hours of manual data and paper shuffle. We are the support service that every department relies on, as well as helping residents through our GIS services. We strive to be knowledgeable, professional, courteous, understanding and responsive. We take our jobs seriously and know that our customers are relying on us to help them continue to provide services to the city. I will now give you some very tangible examples of a few of the services the IS team provides. These are examples of the city's core values. The city value of integrity. We will treat all people with dignity, respect and fairness. It is imperative that we treat our customers with respect. Technology can sometimes be a very frustrating partner. We understand that and we want everyone to feel comfortable and confident that we will do everything we can to solve their problem. The city value of service. We will provide excellent service to the public in the most responsive, efficient and effective manner. Our GIS application here is providing real-time data on vehicle locations, the calls for service and our partners in Lewisville. This application improves situational awareness for our dispatchers and our first responders. The online permit portal provides a fast and convenient way for contractors and homeowners to apply for some permits and pay fees. Over 200 permit applications were created online last year and we expect that number to grow as we continue to add additional permit types. The ability to accurately GPS the city's infrastructure has made for more accurate replacement schedules and faster repairs in emergencies. When your water line breaks, we want to know where that valve is. GIS helped bring code enforcement online. This has created transparency with cases and automated communications with residents and the city. IS is working with Denco 911 and our phone support contractor to help integrate the non-emergency phone lines with the 911 phone lines. This greatly enhanced the dispatcher's call handling experience and improved their response times. The city value of teamwork. We value teamwork, empowerment and the spirit of cooperative effort. This is the remote magistrate project. This software and hardware allow for the judge to provide arraignments without having to physically come to the police department. This has reduced the wait time. The digital fingerprint machine has also saved time, improved accuracy and communication with state and federal agencies. The Parks Department now uses mobile tablets to complete work orders in the field. This program has brought meaningful data to management and has improved workflows. GIS has partnered with the Public Works Department with their asset management system and provided a platform to document and demonstrate the condition of streets. In other words, a picture is worth a thousand words. The city value of responsive. We will be a responsive organization dedicated to maintaining a well-trained and competent workforce to enhance the quality of life in our city. We have worked hard to strengthen our core network and provided layers of redundancy. We have created high availability in the core servers and this has allowed the network to be up 99.9% of the time for over two years straight. We also have backup snot shots that allow us to recover any lost data that has happened within the last four hours. Our new firewall goes beyond the minimum CEGIS requirements. We now have the ability to trace and scan every packet of information that comes into and out of our city. We block on average 10,000 cyber attacks a month just at the firewall. We recently upgraded our camera system. We now have 78 new cameras that provide high resolution to our first responders and dispatch. This project continues as we renovate additional parks. The city value of communication. We believe in simplicity, accuracy and clarity in communications with the public and each other. GIS is not only a powerful tool to analyze data, but it's a great way to communicate that analysis. Dashboards have been an effective way to communicate large amounts of data. This is one of our newest permit dashboards. IS provides project updates to the residents in the city manager's report. This fall, GIS created a voting application that not only showed the polling locations but would give you directions to get there from your address or anywhere that you were located. Cybersecurity is not just a buzzword. The damages from cybersecurity attacks are expected to hit $6 trillion in 2021 alone. In our first phishing test, our customers fell for the bait 29% of the time. In our last test, it was only 11%. That's well below the national average. IS also supports several apps that were built for resident engagement. These apps include Eye on Highland Village, where you can report a concern, and Eye on Water, where you can better understand your water usage. The city value of accountable. We are committed to financially responsible government, one that is cost-conscious and concerned with the effective and efficient delivery of services to the public. One of our biggest cost savings was the extension of life of our core servers by installing them as backups in our disaster recovery site. We also have the skill and ability to make our own network cables. This saves time and money in a pinch. The life of our phone system was extended by three years when we replaced the switch, upgraded the software and the server. The city value of enterprising. We value innovation and creativity and support a culture for change and reasonable risk-taking at all levels of the organization. We have over 30 business automation workflows. We believe in the integration of systems and the streamline of processes. IS has been an integral part of seven large paperless initiatives in the last few years. Here, Van is highlighting the process of scanning documents for the court department.
This is an example of one of the first business automation programs that we wrote for the municipal court. And it allows a court agent to scan in case material and then the decision process goes through and helps decide what the case's noted status is. And when the results are through, it can sort them into active, closed, and update and review bins and file them. So, the actual process for the court technician is to input just simply a citation number like this and a sequence number. And that's the minimum amount of input and then the rest of these things are entered in by being provided through the court system itself. It sends back the data to record with the image. And we've created tools inside of the databases that provide all the answers in one place for the query that fills in the blanks on the court documents.
We work closely with the vendor and the utility department to automate state-required forms. This process used to take two days a month to complete manually. Now, it takes less than five minutes. GIS created and improved the Santa Route app. This app gives updates in near-real time so residents know exactly when Santa's coming down their street. IS has worked closely with the PD to create data views to be added to their new dashboards. Here, IS wrote the database connections that allow for the transfer of data from the ticket writers to the financial software for courts. This previously had to be done manually. IS has worked with the city secretary's office for scanning workflows and to help support the rollout of their open records request portal. Near future projects. These projects are coming up in the next three to 12 months. We are moving the disaster recovery site from 948 to Denco 911. We are going to look to adding a redundant internet line, increase dashboards and report automation for the Parks Department, phone system upgrades, financial software upgrades and a full round of 70-server upgrades to Windows Server 2019. Extended future projects. IS has the privilege of getting the sense of what's to come and making the time to implement what works best for our customers. Some things on the near horizon include 5G small node towers, virtual desktops, a virtual network, smart technology in the roads and the right-of-way, IoT expansion, which stands for the Internet of Things. More devices will be able to report status and functionality. For example, clothing and armored vests that can report health and damage information back to our first responders. Or smart water sensors that only water small areas based on soil conditions and the health of the plant. Operational blockchain technology. This is where technology not only monitors and reports but can make changes to operations. A good example of this is to manage the charging stations for city vehicles and divert our energy when it is needed elsewhere. In conclusion, technology is everywhere. It is the partner we love to hate. When it works seamlessly, you hardly know it is there. When it is missing, you are frustrated. The IS department works hard to make sure your relationship with technology is a positive one. We've come a long way in providing a stable and secure network. We strive to improve business processes with automation and integration of platforms. We are looking to the future with optimism and confidence that we will provide the best technological experience for the most value. I want to thank the following departments. Police, Fire, Parks, Streets, City Secretary's Office and last but not least, a huge thank you to Andrew. Technology is everywhere. Thank you to Andrew. Because I, it was right after the State of the City and I just kind of went, hey, how long does it take you to put together a video? He's like, two weeks. Can you do it in two days? And they did. And huge help, thank you very much for the Police Department and Parks Department and Utilities who stepped up and sent a live body to let us film, you know, some of this stuff in action. So, do we have any questions?
Questions? I have a question about permits. How many permits are online that you, that they can, contractors can go online?
There are six permit types currently.
Types, okay.
Yes. And we just rolled out one of our big test permits, which was, so the previous section of permits were all the ones that didn't require city review. And we just rolled out doors and windows, which does require city review. So, it's basically an application, the city reviews it, then we say if it's approved or denied and then they can pay. So, that's actually been running for the last four to six weeks pretty well. And so, now that we've passed that test, I'd like to, we're going to continue to roll out more permits that require review. Because they'll have, they have to upload the documents and then, you know, we review the documents and that was the big hurdle, was making sure that that part all worked, that they can upload their documents.
Anybody else?
What percentage of our records do you think are online now? Have we gone back and scanned, you know, the last few years, five years, eight years?
We have scanned a lot. I'll be happy to come to look back at the databases and see if I can get a number for it.
Well, not down to the nth degree, but you know, what, five years?
Well, okay, so, all of the, all the ASBILTS are scanned in now, right? Scott, we've completed all the ASBILTS scanning. So, that was huge. We've also completed, what, at least the last three, four years on city secretary documents of scanning.
A lot of our documents are done, like with the meetings and different things. Ordinances, resolutions, minutes, those things are done on a regular basis. That probably goes back, I think in 2006, when they started to implement that. We've gone beyond that on some of the other items to get those things scanned into Laserfish. Laserfish is kind of a different animal from some of the, I don't know if you were talking about like permitting inspections and the online documents that you can, that the public can use and submit for permit requests and things like that or you just don't get the right ones. Every department has attached something that's in Laserfish. Does that mean we're in great fashion?
And we not only support Laserfish, but we really pride ourselves in creating custom workflows to minimize the amount of data entry that people have to put into with those documents. So, that, kind of like the court document that Van was displaying, they just type in, you know, one to two pieces of information and then through the workflow, seven or eight pieces of information gets pulled out of the system and attached to all those records. All that metadata is not hand-entered, that's all automated. So, we, we like to create workflows as much as we can to, yeah, I'm a huge proponent of reducing manual entry. I mean, and then I see somebody doing something manually, I just kind of cringe, like, ooh, how can we help? I want to help you stop having to type that in because anything that we can do automated, obviously frees up their time to do other things.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, again, you all, and I know I've said this before, but I can't stop reiterating it. You are an extremely supportive council and I can't begin to say how appreciative myself and my team are because of your support. It is because of your support that we are able to do all of those different things and bring these systems up to not only their current state but look to the future and to be prepared for these things. So, I greatly appreciate your support.
I do have one last question. What is the size of your staff?
Six.
Six, okay.
Yes.
And how long have you been?
And that includes GIS.
Okay, so how, and how long have you had six people? I mean, has it been consistent? Have you increased staff or increased?
No. When I took over, seven years ago, there was just three and myself.
Okay.
And so, then when I took over IT, then we needed to fill the GIS position. So, thankfully, we were able to do that. And then, we added the police services, my police services support admin was the last person that we added.
Okay.
Two years, no, I guess it's three years.
Then the next question would be, and excuse me for not asking this before, but it looks like you have a very, very robust platform and have created a lot of efficiencies within the city. I'd be curious to know that with all the efficiencies that we've created in taking a lot of people from manual to computer, have we gained any FTE efficiencies because of that? You know, maybe we lost somebody and we didn't have to replace them because we're a lot more efficient, efficient from technology. I'd be just kind of curious to know how that has affected us.
I don't know if I can say that we've gained an entire FTE, but I definitely can say we have gained hundreds of man-hours, you know, by, like I said, like even the water report alone, that used to be two full days that the administrative assistant had to pull those numbers in every single month. And now, it's done in five minutes.
So, basically, okay.
So, things like that, you know, we pick up chunks of time here and there.
Right. So, basically, you've been able to increase the capacity or the throughput of the people that you have on your team.
Absolutely.
And on all the teams in the area because you don't, you're just more, much more efficient.
And much more accurate. So, like even the, like the ticket writer information, now that just goes directly into the courts, you know, and before, we would have to pull up different systems and then, you know, copy and paste or manually input that information into the system. I don't like silo systems.
Right.
So, I try to make bridges everywhere that possibly can.
So, really, what I'm hearing is that we had an overall staffing level here, let's say of 100 people. And there's possibilities that we weren't getting the full capacity out of everybody because we had not as robust of a platform. So, now, we have a very good, robust platform. We're operating to very, very efficient capacity. So, in theory, that could mean that with this efficiency, down the road, we don't have to hire and we keep, we keep our staff where we are, but we get more capacity and more growth without having to, you know, put headcount in place. That's, that's all I wanted to clarify.
Absolutely. Every automation that we put in place, the end goal is that to make it faster and easier and take less time than the original process.
See, that's really good because a lot of businesses, what they fail to recognize is that thing. And they keep adding heads and adding heads and adding heads. Whereas, if they just think about their processes and again, going to their throughput, maximizing technology maximizes efficiency, maximizes capacity and then you have the base where you can grow and you don't have to increase headcount, which falls to the bottom line. So, great job.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
How much of any of that increased efficiency got sucked up by Austin and Washington requiring us to do more in those last seven years? Because I'm sure there's been a trade-off of some sort, so I'm glad we've done it.
And more reporting, every time they require more reports, then we, we get the opportunity to create new automation. We look at it that way.
Well, we appreciate you and your team. They are fabulous. I know that, when I forget my password, every time, which is every time I try to sign in, they're there. So, we really do appreciate you and your team.
Well, thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Whichever business had, had the same philosophy.
I do.
Well, actually, one of the things that I do is I really try to run the department, I mean, I know we're a government, but I look at it through a business eye. So, business analytics and analysis and data analysis, you know, are some, one of the pillars of my program. So, I, I'm always looking for ways to improve.
Too many companies outstrip their infrastructure with growth and then they come back and they go, heck, I got to do something now. Well, it's too late, but you've already built that good base, so congratulations, great work.
All right. We're going to move on to receive a presentation and discuss the city's water meter boxes and accessibility. Mr. Kristin.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. With snow apocalypse of '21, our four-day winter this year, we did have one inquiry come out of all of that. And it wasn't, it's not a bad inquiry. We had one complaint about locking meter box lids. So, kind of backing up just a little bit, water meter boxes house a city asset. Inside that box is a water meter and a shut-off valve. Residents get in there if they like, per Section 22.2.05 of our city code. However, they cannot technically operate any of the, the items inside the meter can. Now, the biggest obstacle to get in a city's water meter can is a key. Key's already available at any most hardware stores to get into the box and then you need another key to shut off the actual curb stop valve. Most people don't realize that. They don't have those keys, so they go in there with a crescent wrench and start turning knobs and, and then things snap off and break and end up with additional fees, possible additional fees charged to them if city forces have to go out and make repairs. The city also adopts international plumbing code. The code that we currently have adopted is 2015 code. However, the international plumbing codes since the early 70s have required additional shut-off valves. And I don't have them all, I don't have all the places listed here, but I have the majority of them listed here that count towards what we're talking about today. Believe it or not, you, you have to have a valve, they call out the valve inside the can, they call out a valve just past the meter, they call out a valve on the line just before it enters the structure and then they call out valves at every appliance. Your, your toilets, refrigerators, washing machines, anything that runs the water in the house has a pickcock valve under every sink, hot and cold. And then the rules even get more stringent if you have a two-story multifamily residential So, keeping that in mind and, and the way we, we build and inspect our city and folks landscape their yards or let their grass grow or the leaves fall or add dirt here and there in their yards, they tend to lose these valves. You should not lose these valves, of course. Keeping in mind that, that, you know, snow mageddon happens every 10, 15, 20 years and you're going to need stuff like, like these valves. Now, we, working with Lori and Andrew, put out articles constantly in the fall and in the spring to remind folks in the city to make sure they know where their water shut-off valve is just in case they have an emergency. Does it fall on deaf ears? I don't know. So, walking up in the public right-of-way, this is what you see. It's a, it's a locking meter lid. It's flat. You need that key in the second picture. This is the key. A form of that key is readily available at any hardware store. They're relatively cheap, probably three to $5 each. The key fits in the slot, there's a slot here. That's the key in the slot. And this is the locking mechanism. It's very simple. It's just a spring-loaded locking mechanism that has a, a little tab that comes out that fits underneath a lip. Now, if you were to remove that locking mechanism, you have a potential accident in the making. If you, if you step on that box lid, it could shift and now you have an open pit to have your foot drop into, break an ankle, hurt yourself, fall down, and then you're calling other folks. Inside that meter box, again, it's, it is a public asset. There's about $500 worth of hardware radios with software in there. Now, this is a rough breakdown. So, there's 5,280 residential, single-family residential meters in the city. At $500 each in that asset, you roughly have $2.6 million worth of, worth of city asset just there. The lid alone costs about $40, which equates to about 200. That kind of just broke out the rest of them. We have a total of 5,635 meters, so institutional, commercial and agricultural make up the rest of those meters. So, breaking it down even more, the standard courage stop is around $50, the reducer is around 10, the water meter itself is about $210. The water meter to the radio has a wire that's about three feet long. So, when, when a person goes out there that doesn't understand that there's a wire connected and they lift that up and they go more than three feet, now the wire is not connected, which prompts a service call, a repair and additional tax dollars or repair fees charged to the resident. and additional tax dollars or repair fees charged to the resident.
Is the city alerted when that happens?
The city is alerted with a tamper code.
Okay.
So we talked about the plumbing code requiring private shut-off valves. Here's some examples that I went out and documented. All these examples are within the city. These are shut-off valves. This is the, the corner of a house. These are shut-off valves going just before the structure in a flower bed. Could those get buried? Very easily. Should the homeowner know where they're at? Yes.
Why aren't there two of them, Scott? I'm sorry.
Looking at this, that looks like the irrigation.
Right.
So one of these, you know, one of these probably goes to the irrigation. You know, I, I assume the line comes in something like this and turns. I don't know what it's doing under the ground.
The other one goes to the house?
One goes to irrigation and one is, is to the structure.
So the one up top is irrigation, the furthest one?
Possibly.
Yeah.
If, if I was a guessing person, yeah. I'd say that was irrigation. This is a standard setup at the curb. This is the curb at the road. This is still in the public right-of-way. This is sidewalk. So you have your meter here and you have a courtesy gate valve here that has been city standard since 1995.
And that's called a what? A gate valve?
I'm sorry.
A gate valve? Never heard of that.
A gate valve is in its own box?
It's in its own box. It's outside of the locking, the locking meter box. So the gate valve is, is right here. However, it's, you know, it's in, it's in one of the, what we call an irrigation control valve. You'll see a little, it's about a six-inch green cover that has I C V on it. It's very easily covered. If you step on it, sometime, you know, it'll, it'll sink an inch and then the grass grows over it or it gets filled with mud. It's just, you know, it's property maintenance, property owner maintenance needs to keep them up.
Charlotte, the ones in our neighborhood that shut off valves in our neighborhood are in that top box. We don't have these.
Like this one?
Yeah, yeah. No, 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 no. The top box by the house.
Like the irrigation, what you were saying, the irrigation?
Yeah, my irrigation shut-off valve is actually in the yard. So my, my shut-off valve is there. And that's, I think, the older houses, that's kind of normally where it goes.
How do you know which one's which, Scott? You just turn it and see what goes off?
Well, no, if you have an older house, you should have, you should have a, and if you have an irrigation system, those are gonna be in the yard.
Yeah, it'll be a square box. It's your backflow preventer for your irrigation. That's where you would turn it.
Irrigation system houses a, a different system. So yes, there is a, a separate shut-off for irrigation, but then you have a, a backflow device in there that feeds into your irrigation system. And then, and then there's different valves for however many zones you have on your irrigation system. But my irrigation system has several valves on it. Another example would be this one. So you have your, your water meter, locking meter box. You have a courtesy gate valve. And then up here you have, it looks like another little valve going into an irrigation box. And then it splits off and has additional, I didn't open those because it's on private property, but one of those is the shut-off valve before it goes into the structure. This is the flower bed and barely, barely got a, a shot of the structure there.
There's one, two, three, four, five out there. It's, let's see which one it is. Let's just get started turning. And then you've got the meter.
It's all private equipment?
So I can see where it's all, where it would be extremely confusing to the homeowner.
I've got a question. I have no clue where one would be. How would I find out?
You can hire a third-party, a third-person plumbing company. And they can perform excavation of your service lateral until they find it. You can generally tell where the, where the, the main plumbing goes into the house. If you have an outside wall in the front that has plumbing, bathroom, kitchen sink, hose bib, that's generally where the water line to feed that structure is going in. So somewhere in that vicinity, you know, you can go from a straight line from the meter to there. It's just, it's a guesswork. If you get up in your flower beds, you can, you can probe around with a screwdriver or what we call a probe and rod, which again is readily available at any hardware store. A piece of rebar, something, something that has long that'll penetrate the, the soil and you can, you can feel if it hits a, a solid object like a box lid.
It shouldn't be too deep under the surface, even if the dirt has covered it. I mean, you're not gonna dig this far down and you probably just have to kick the dirt off of it.
Are there homes that don't have those?
It's been a requirement since the early 70s. The only neighborhood in Highland Village that's, that was here before we incorporated in '63 is the Clearwater A B C area, possibly the Holiday Edition, which is the horseshoe area. Those might be suspect not to have one. However, I do know for a fact that some of them do because they've been quieted over the years. And, and that's our recommendation. If you don't have one, hire a third-party plumber or if you, if you have the ability to install one, install a shut-off valve and, and always remember where it's at in case of an emergency.
Did you say the meter was usually in the, was it always in the right-of-way? Or is it usually in the right-of-way or what?
Always in the right-of-way.
Water meters are always in the right-of-way. It's on the edge of the right-of-way. They can be located in a permanent easement.
Far away edge of the right-of-way, maybe? Mine's in the middle of my yard.
You'd be surprised. That's where the right-of-way stops.
It's probably, well, somebody else needs to mow it then. It's probably about 12 to 15 feet away from the curb. It's literally in the middle of my yard.
That's probably where your property line is.
Okay.
Means you can park a truck there.
Lose your service. Yeah.
We got a nice flusher truck that will park there for you.
Scott?
Yes.
I don't know. I mean, I know on the west side, I don't know if I'm an exception, but I know on our curb, there's a saw cut or, you know, a slight scoring in the curb. And it blew. That points right at the water meter.
That is a, that's a, a visual for the city employee to know where the water meter is.
So is that only in newer neighborhoods that we started doing that or is it?
No, it's citywide. However, the entire city's not curb and gutter. So in, in the asphalt, bar ditch neighborhoods, it's just a blue mark on, on the paved area. If you have a curb and gutter, sometimes you'll see a W. They stamp, they used to stamp a W when the, when the concrete was wet for water and, and an S for sewer. And that's where, if you dig down, that's where your laterals are gonna be.
So Scott, I hate to disagree with you that it's always in the right-of-way, but I just had my house refinanced like two months ago and I have a survey that shows that water meter inside my property line. So it is inside my property line.
Hey, so you can get into yours. So you can get into yours.
I can get into mine anytime I want to.
We're not saying you can't get in it.
What's on his property, so?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, when the survey, the survey denoted it. And I remember looking, oh, there's, there's my water meter right there. Wow. Yeah.
So in this fourth picture, you have a water meter and then you also have the gate. Is that what you called it? A gate valve?
This picture?
Yes. Is that what that is?
This is the water meter. This, of course, it's open. And this is their gate valve.
Okay.
The courtesy gate valve that the city installs. I didn't get a, I didn't get a wide shot of that. But I don't know. I'm probably about 15, 20 foot away from the house in that picture. And there was another set of valves before it went into the structure.
Okay, I'm very confused now. Let's say that we're having a snow mageddon, whatever you call it, whatever it was.
Snow apocalypse?
Yeah, that was it.
Galaska.
Yeah, Galaska, Talaska. And I wanted to shut off my water because I had a water leak. Would I, I wouldn't go to the water meter, the big one. I would, and I wouldn't go to the one that's in this fourth picture right beside it. You say there's another one closer to the house.
You should have one closer to the house according to the plumbing code.
Okay.
Yeah.
Most of the time, it's gonna be in your flower bed.
And then you just, it's just got a valve and you just, just like the outside spigot, you just turn it and it turns it off?
There's many different valves. There's gate valves, ball valves.
Ay, ay, ay. Can we just not make things simple?
Just open it and turn it and put it back.
Just within three feet of the water meter, there's gonna be a valve.
Within three feet? But that's the courtesy.
Want to have it cleaned out and ready to go at all times because they will fill with mud. And then when you have an emergency, you take the lid off, now you're staring at mud or dried dirt or ants or fire ants.
Or snakes.
Dead animals. It's all good.
Okay, I'm just, I'm, I'm thinking in an emergency, when you've got a water leak and you need to turn off the water, what I would do is freak and start turning anything I could get my hands on. And probably breaking a lot of things in these meters. So I'm not gonna, because I, I don't have a clue where the key is to get into the meter. So I'm not going to the big one. But I can get into this second one. But you're saying the one that's, in this picture, the one that's closest to the water meter is a courtesy?
It's yours. We give it to you.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, okay. So I could go there. We're gonna have a test at my house tomorrow.
Jerry probably knows where it is.
No, he probably does, but you know. He doesn't tell me where those things are, so.
Now, in, in your neighborhood, in your neighborhood, we probably, we haven't changed the water line out. So it's built prior in 1995. So you, you probably follow under old code and have a plumber installed, shut off in between the meter and the house, probably closer to the house.
So good luck is what that means.
In your flower bed.
Okay. Y'all wanna come over tomorrow? Because I'm gonna turn the water off. That's right, tomorrow. I'm gonna see which one it is.
If a resident though really had a problem, could they call the city?
If a resident has an issue and they do not know how or can't locate their, their water shut-off, yes, they call the city.
And it works.
During hours, they, they can call the utility department. And then after hours, they call the non-emergency number in, in H V F D roles as well as a public works employee.
You know, let's say somebody had a, a slight water problem and they weren't able to, they, like, for example, I had a water issue and I was able to turn off my valves upstairs in the, in the toilet, et cetera. So that was taken care of. I didn't have to shut off the water. But what if, what if I really had an emergency? I couldn't find my water meter up close to the house. I could call in an emergency, you'd come out. But then, let's say after the fact, I'm freaking out going, okay, if I really had this happen again, I don't know where this shut-off is and I'm not gonna mess with this one out at the yard. Does, will the city provide a service where they can come out and show the resident where that cutoff is?
We don't know where they're at. We don't know where they're at.
No way to find them?
As I stated earlier, you can hire a third-party and excavate your line.
I prefer the, the rebar that you were, so I could just, and then I'll go through the pipe and I'll find where the water line is.
You'd go a half hour to go find it now on the market.
Had two men digging in his front yard this week.
Looking for it.
Looking for it. And they went down about that deep to find it.
Did they ever find it?
Apparently, they did.
Wow. Okay, so this is, this is all interesting information.
So, you know, backing up to the very front, beginning of the presentation, our inquiry was locking meter box lids. Can the locks be removed? Our recommendation is gonna be, we do not recommend removing the meter box lids, locks at this time. However, we'll leave it up to council to provide direction.
Well, from what I understood though, it's almost a safety issue. With that locking mechanism gone, there's the potential of stepping on that lid and it flying up or coming up. And you step in and you could hurt yourself.
That is a possibility.
So his thought is don't open the water meter. Stay away from it and find your shut-off valve.
Find the shut-off valve. Party at the Wilcoxes. We'll be finding, we'll be finding the shut-off valve.
Also, what he's saying is if you happen to get the water meter open, you still have to have a special tool to turn the water off. You just can't get in there with a pair of pliers. You could break it. So you have to have another tool that turns that off. And if you don't know how to do that, then you could snap that. Now you have a big issue where they have to come out and fix it and it's taxpayer dollars on their nickel and plus it's gonna cost you.
If you break that curb stop, that city curb stop, and you didn't get the water off, the city utility department is not gonna be able to get that water off either. So if you have a raging leak in your attic, in your house, and you broke that curb stop.
Oh, yikes.
It's a smart move.
It's not my education.
Find your shut-off valve.
Education. We may need to have Andrew come out with a camera and we'll go over how to turn the, find the, find it, locate it, what it looks like and how to turn it off.
Not in his head, too.
Yeah, and Mayor, we, we did talk about doing that. And in fact, during this time, I had to turn my water off. And I have a big clump of pampas grass and then there were leaves covering, leaves and dirt had built up. I didn't know where the private cutoff was. So I had one of those keys. So I went to the meter and turned it off. Scott assisted me and there it was. It was about that deep, pretty soft soil. So it's, it was there. But it would be a good idea for us to do a video and show people.
Some kind of educational video for, I mean, obviously for me because I wouldn't have a clue. And I wouldn't call the non-emergency. I'd call 911 because it would be an emergency if I had.
Andrew, time for a new video.
Then it would be an emergency. So I totally understand.
Scott, you guys didn't, you don't respond to just over 100 water shut-offs?
Out of the, yes. We responded to 130 water shut-offs. That's not all internal structure breaks. Many of those were just irrigation breaks. But there were several of that 130 that were, that were inside the structure. And I believe the fire department responded to almost all the commercial facilities. Fire risers had some kind of issue during, during the thaw.
It's obviously something that we all need to be educated on. We need to locate that valve. We need to, to know how to fix that. I have a, I'm curious about the ones in the house. Those things stick and they, then they don't turn off. And then you have to have a plumber come out to replace those. You know, because they're about, they're under all the cabinets and behind the toilets and are you supposed to be turning those once a month?
I'm not a licensed plumber, so.
I love that answer.
Always a good idea.
I love that answer.
It's always a good idea to exercise those, those values.
A good maintenance program for a homeowner is key to successful operating equipment.
Okay, thank you Scott. It's good information. Anybody else have any questions for him?
I was gonna say, the other thing is ion water.
Ion water.
If you're not signed up for ion water, that gives you a text within minutes of having a toilet leak.
What's ion water, John?
It's the app.
Go on the city website and look it up.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's an app and it will tell you if you're leaking water.
Is our beacon.
Okay.
System.
That's right. Send me work on that, would you? You could turn your water off.
Turn your water off from ion water. That would be cool.
An ion water app. That would be fabulous.
And it told us how much we were using keeping the drip going. And it was up a hundred percent week over week.
I think I need to get mine a little bit more sensitive, cause I don't think it tells me that. I think it just.
That technology is here, Mike.
Yeah.
Shut off water from, from the uh.
Oh, it is?
Ion water. It's just uh.
Don't, let's not talk about that. Don't talk about that.
Okay.
Okay. But you're right, the app is a good thing. Thank you Scott for that information. You know, we don't think about those things except when we have an emergency. Um, and so I think this ice storm, snowstorm, whatever it was, uh, was an eye-opening experience for all of us. And I hope for all of the residents of Highland Village, so. All right, we're gonna move on. Uh, clarification of action items listed on today's city council meeting agenda. Does anyone have any questions? Any clarification? I know um, on number thirteen, we discussed at the last meeting um, that we, there was a question about the charter stating that we had to do the budget and it had to be approved in March. Um, I don't know, Kevin, if you wanna address it or, we've looked it up and it has to be, doesn't have to be voted on in March. It has to be in the city secretary.
Right.
Is that correct?
Well, it's the presentation of the annual audit.
Of the annual audit. Has to be in the city secretary.
Yeah, under state law and the charter, but primarily the state law provision um, says that it just has to be delivered and on file in the city secretary's office uh, prior to the end of March. And so, uh, so there's no requirement that city council actually receive the report by then. Just as long as it's done and, and in, so.
So at the, the last meeting, we had discussed canceling and then we didn't, the next meeting, but we didn't, we didn't think we could. So it, it is on the consent agenda um, for cancellation because, for that reason. Um, so, does everybody understand that? Okay. Is there anything else? Anybody else have anything? Okay. Hope there's not anymore, then we will go, um, we are going to go into closed session. Um, we're going to go and hold a closed meeting in accordance with the following section of Texas government code five five one point zero seven one. No, yeah, consultation with city attorney concerning pending and contemplated litigation on any regular or work session agenda item. Requiring confidential attorney-client advice necessitated by the deliberation or discussion of said items. B, section five five one point oh seven four personnel deliberate the employee and evaluation of the city manager and city secretary. And it is, what time is it? Ooh, six fifty-four.
Highland Village City Council meeting, today is March the 9th. It is 7:35 PM and let me apologize for running over in closed session and for being late starting this meeting, but let the record show that all council members are present and we are going to get started with a prayer led by Councilman Tom Heslop and then he will lead us in our pledges.
Please bow your head. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you tonight thanking you for finally a couple of really beautiful days. Thank you for getting us through the challenges that we dealt with in the snow and ice and I pray that the people who lost electricity and water are in good shape now and are moving forward with their lives. Lord, also thank you so much for giving us the resources to finally find and implement vaccines to treat the horrible disease that's affected all of us throughout the United States and we bless you for giving doctors and scientists the guidance to do that. Lord, I also ask you to bless our first responders. They are extremely important in the lives of everybody in our city and our country. Those who serve for us abroad, keep them safe and sound from challenges that they'll face. Bless everyone here tonight that we all have a safe and sound trip home in your name. Amen.
Amen, thank you. Please stand and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and every nation has its own.
Honor the Texas flag, allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Thank you. We are going to move along and as I stated earlier, we have no visitor comments tonight, so we're going to move on to mayor and council reports on items of community interest pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.0415. City council may report on the following items: expression of thanks, congratulations or condolences, information about holiday schedules, recognition of individuals, reminders about upcoming city council events, information about community events and announcements involving imminent threat to public health and safety. Counsel, does anyone have anything?
I have one.
I do, Mayor.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like everybody to give a shout out to Riley Mattingly, the daughter of Jennifer and her father. She plays on the Alabama women's soccer team. First game she scored a gold and tore her ACL and will be out for six to nine months. So let's keep her in your prayers and wish her a speedy recovery. The reason I can't talk is I got my first shot this morning and I want to compliment Denton County and all of the volunteers. It was amazing in and out in about 30 minutes. So thank you, thank you. And lastly, happy birthday and I won't sing but to our mayor, to Mr. Heslop and Mr. Jaworski this month, so wish him happy birthday.
Absolutely. Thank you. Dan?
Mine was this past weekend, Marcus cheerleading squad competed at a national competition and finished third in the nation, so I just want to give a shout out to them.
Wow, that's awesome. All right, counsel, does anybody else have anything? Because you know I do. All right. Mr. Doyle, you want to join me at the front? This is all about you now.
So this is congratulations and condolences, so it's going to be congratulations for Bobby Doyle, but for his wife maybe condolences. But I would like to recognize, before we recognize Bobby, please, Mayor, just his mom is here, Joan, and significant other Jim, and of course Cindy, so thanks for coming out and over 20 of our folks of the 33 sworn are here and thank you for being here for this too.
Wow, yeah. It was like a parade coming in. Okay, you're going to come, you're going to hold this because I have the big print where I can see. I'm going to pull this down so I could read. We'll stand as far apart as we can. All right, so counsel, again, last meeting we had a retirement and then this meeting we have a retirement. I don't know what I'm doing or what we're doing, counsel, but everybody seems to want to retire right now, but I have a proclamation. Whereas Bobby Doyle joined the City of Highland Village as a police officer on June 6, 2000 and whereas Bobby Doyle was promoted to the position of police corporal on October 25, 2004, police sergeant on November 6, 2006, and ultimately promoted to police lieutenant on February 18, 2013. And whereas during his tenure, Bobby Doyle has served the department as auxiliary liaison, field training officer, defensive tactics instructor, department armor of rifle shotgun and pistol, firearm instructor, taser instructor, vehicle coordinator, AOR District B, C, and D supervisor, assistant liaison to the shops of Highland Village, and on the policy review committee. Whew, that's a mouthful. Whereas Bobby Doyle has achieved certifications from Texas Commission on Law Enforcement for Master Peace Officer, Basic Instructor Proficiency, Firearms Instructor Proficiency, Homeowners Insurance Inspector, and Standardized Field Sobriety Testing Practitioner. And whereas Bobby Doyle has received over 36 commendations for his service, including multiple awards for Supervisor of the Year, Officer of the Year, Certificate of Merit and Community Service Award. And whereas Bobby Doyle has dedicated the last 20 years to serving the Highland Village community and shall ever remain part of the City of Highland Village family, now therefore I, Charlotte Wilcox, Mayor of the City of Highland Village, do hereby proclaim March 26, 2021, as Lieutenant Bobby Doyle Day in the City of Highland Village. And we thank you for all your time. Sorry, you want pictures? You want pictures?
Yes.
Family?
I'm going to blame Mike Levitt on the retirements. He started this thing and actually he just found out today that you were retiring and he said congratulations.
Now come on up here and we'll get you right over here. Bobby, come over here in the middle.
You know, the mask mandate's going away in about four days.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, let's take some good pictures. Let's take good pictures.
He says for the requirements, if you've had your shots face to face, now we're good too, so you're good.
Yeah.
Oh, they're doing something else? Oh, I'm sorry.
We have just another plaque to present to Lieutenant Doyle. Bobby, as he goes by, just a small token, Chief Stewart, who has worked with Bobby for all those 21 years. That's just again, a small token of our appreciation, Bobby. And we have many, many more memories, so thank you.
Okay, now, family, go get your, pull your mask off and take your pictures.
Before he steps down, Bobby has been doing our voiceovers for many of the videos, so you do need him. He needs to step up here and say a few words, okay?
There you go, please do.
Just want to thank everyone for 20 years, a lot of good years, a couple of bad things over the years, but you know what? The good outweighs the bad. I'm really happy that I had the opportunity to come here and serve. Just want to thank, you know, the mayor, the council, the citizens, my wife, the chiefs, my mom, so thank you again and wish all you the best.
And we wish you the best. We're going to miss you. The community's going to miss you.
Thank you.
Hope to see you around.
I won't be a stranger.
There you go, perfect.
He is going to provide firearms training for us after also to continue that process. I think he just wants to come yell at a few people a few more times.
There you go. Well, good. Perfect. Well.
And we're going to clear the air.
Wow, thank y'all for coming out. Good to see everybody. Well, I'm glad that you appreciated that and it will continue to be that way here, so thank you for coming. It was nice meeting you. Good to see you.
Great job.
It's good to see you, man.
Glad we're here.
Yeah, glad you could see us. You know, one nice thing about retirements is we get to see some of these, like the police department, these guys that we don't ever see because they're on nights or something, you know? So we do, we get to see, we get to see them, even though retirements are kind of sad. I mean, it's good for the person, but for us, okay?
Do I have another open position in the police department?
On the 26th, that's right. I'm going to go back and get my certification to be a police officer when I grow up. Look at everybody look down. Okay, we're going to move on with city manager and staff reports. Mr. Stevens or Chief?
The chief's going to start, then I'm going to have a little bit after he's finished.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, counsel, glad to be here with you all this evening. We're going to just kind of do the COVID update that we've been doing for y'all since this all started. The main thing is, you know, we're not going to go into all the numbers, but I counted left four weeks or four two-week periods on here, so really two months worth of data. And the main indicator here that things are trending in the right direction is the active cases have been steadily decreasing over the last two months, which is a great indicator. The fatalities have continued as we have, I believe, six more a day. However, the percentages, the numbers are starting to drop now as well. Just on a national level, there's 500, or sorry, 29 million 78,000 cases. There's been 527,000 fatalities nationally in the U.S. We have seen the 80-plus population did increase additional fatalities over the last two weeks, however, it has decreased to 11.1% versus the previous almost 12, 12 and a half percent. So we're starting to see some numbers going in the right direction. Hospitalizations, this is an area where we're really seeing some improvement. I'm happy to report that there's no trauma service areas in the state that are above 15%. The highest now is 11% in El Paso. Our, the Denton Counties, right now we're at 7.6%, which is a decrease from six weeks ago of 25.2%. The daily usage is 70.1% of the total hospitals and remember that normally hospitals operate at 95% capacity at any day normally without COVID. We've gone down to 10.6% are actually being treated for COVID. That was previously, let's see here, that was at 18.9% two weeks ago and then 24.1% of the ICU beds are being used for COVID and that was over 40% two weeks ago. So we're seeing trending in the right direction as far as the hospitalizations. The, in DFW, our trauma service area E, we're down to 6.49% and statewide, we're at 6.03% on the hospitalizations as far as the GA 32, 15% level was. So with that, you know, we've had, Texas has been allocated almost 11 million doses of the vaccine. Seven million people have had at least one shot now, so we're starting to see some substantial percentages of the population actually get the vaccine. 4.5 million have had the first shot, 2.5 million have had the second shot. We're averaging about 2.1 million shots per year nationally, or per day nationally now. As far as the U.S. goes, 123 million doses have been distributed throughout the United States and we're at 93 million people have had the vaccine. That's 61 million have had the first dose and 32 million have had the full dose. So we're starting to really see some substantial numbers. We're talking, we're not talking about 1, 2% level, we're talking 30 to 20, 30% levels as far as getting vaccinated. We're still going to continue to do vaccination clinics when we get an allocation. We're still making weekly requests. Hopefully with the Johnson and Johnson being released, we'll actually get some vaccine soon so we can fulfill a need in the community. We're obviously going to continue to focus on the 1A, 1B city staff as well as 1B residents and now also school and childcare workers are being included in the vaccinations now, so hopefully we can get our teachers vaccinated and college professors as well. We're going to continue to support Denton County's hub model. Council of Fleming was there today and we actually had one of our guys out there today helping. It's a huge endeavor to vaccinate that many people in a week. I know Judge Eads was proud, they actually got over the 10,000 mark in one day. Denton County really is leading the state as far as vaccination clinics. If you look at other counties within the state, they're not doing anything near what, even in Dallas County, aren't doing anything near what Denton County's been able to pull off, so it's nothing short of miraculous really. And we're going to continue to heed CDC guidelines as Mr. Stevens is going to speak about GA 34, which goes into effect at midnight tonight basically, so tomorrow GA 34 is in effect, so he'll be speaking about that. But we're still recommending and the state still recommends using your good prudent judgment as far as masking up if you can, social distance and things. They haven't fully removed the recommendation, they just removed the state mandate. And with that, I'll turn this over to Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, chief. And as the chief mentioned, GA 34 does go into effect at 12:01 Wednesday, 12:01 AM Wednesday morning, so we will be experiencing that tomorrow, which does mean that the statewide mask mandate is ended and businesses can open up to 100% capacity. And it certainly is, it is nice to see that we're going in that direction, but as the chief was going over those trends, we're certainly heading in the right direction, but still need to continue to do our part. So here at City Hall and other city facilities, we will continue to follow the CDC guidelines like we have been. We will continue to wear masks and for people visiting those city buildings, they will as well. In the work environment, employees when interacting with the public will wear the mask and when we're not able to socially distance within, from six feet, we will wear masks as well. There are some other things though that we are changing and hopefully getting to that sense of normalcy. Now outdoor pavilion rental will resume at 100% capacity tomorrow. The CDC guidelines will be provided to those people that are renting it and we certainly will encourage everyone to adhere to those guidelines. Senior All-Star programming is going to resume at 100% capacity on March 15. Participants will be required to wear a face covering in some of the activities that they do, they cannot stay six feet apart, but we will resume some of those activities. Special event applications for outdoor events will no longer require the approval of the mayor. I know you're happy about that.
Yes.
But also with that, we will supply the CDC guidelines to those renting and encourage those to adhere to the guidelines. and encourage those to adhere to the guidelines. Also, looking at some other things, we do want to take this time period. We are trending in the right direction. See where we are May 1st, and then if we want to evaluate, then open some indoor facilities for rentals. But we will have some special events coming up. We're doing an Easter drive-through event at Copper's Branch Park on May, on March 27th. The paper shredding day at Pilot Mill Park will be April 24th. The Highland Village Art Festival will occur this year on May 1st. And then Movies at the Park, we will do that on May 14th and May 21st. And hopefully beyond that, we can continue this trend and have even more events and really somewhat of a celebration of maybe to the end of what we've experienced this past year. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
Council, any having questions? What's the, what was the reasoning behind May 1st, the date?
We really wanted to make sure we could get through the spring break, Easter, all of those things. The way it is right now, if we were renting those indoor facilities, the level of cleaning would really have to increase. It would put a real strain on us. So, we want to take a little more time to evaluate that. Now, I will say, if the trends are just going really, really well, we could take a look at that sooner than that. But that's just kind of the mark that we said, let's see where we are at May 1st and go from there.
Okay. Anybody? Chief, you said you were continuing to ask for allocations of the vaccine, but we're not getting any?
We haven't been allocated any since the 100 original that we got.
The very first one, huh? You think it's just all going to Denton County?
The vast majority of it's going to the hub, the big hubs. Again, with Johnson &amp; Johnson coming onboard now and them releasing that, hopefully that'll start to trickle down to some of the smaller providers.
Has anybody been in contact with our seniors in Highland Village? I know they haven't been gathering, but have the majority of them been vaccinated through Denton County? Or do we know? Is there any way to know?
You can't ask those questions.
Oh. Okay.
Hippos.
I forgot.
There's two seniors.
There's the seniors, two seniors. Perfect. Okay, well, if anybody else had any questions, thanks, chief, and thanks, Paul. Let's hope we continue to trend downward. Okay, so we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Oh, wait, no, we're not. We're gonna watch the State of the City video. I think I did that last year and skipped right over it, so.
It's a new day in Highland Village. More people than ever are enjoying our parks and trails. We are welcoming new families to Highland Village. As our existing businesses are adapting and changing, we are seeing new businesses choose our community. City employees continue to provide services, work on projects, and care for the people of our city.
16 of the 23 streets included in the 2018 Bond Project are complete. This year, we will complete the final phase of the project. Streets are being identified that will receive asphalt overlay or concrete panel replacements for this fiscal year. Over the last five years, we've made improvements to 46 of our roadways. A new sidewalk was built on Briar Hill Boulevard, providing a safer journey to and from school for some of our youngest residents. It is a new day in Highland Village.
Our park staff came together with the help of our public works staff, small community groups, and even council and the mayor to rebuild the Kids Castle Playground. The community will be able to safely traverse the city with the construction this year of the Highland Village Road Sidewalk, the Chapel Hill Trail Connection, and a new and improved walking path at Victoria Park. We may be small, but we are mighty.
It's a new day in Highland Village. Our firefighter paramedics are now working a 48-hour on and 96-hour off shift schedule, which has provided for an overall increase in the total number of training hours as well as the quality of training. We've also recognized a decrease in the overtime needed to maintain our minimum staffing levels. Our community is now safer in the event of severe weather due to the completion of the city's Outdoor Warning Siren Enhancement Project. And we are also an approved COVID-19 vaccination provider and will be working to provide vaccination clinics to those within our community who still need to be vaccinated.
Our department has built a relationship of trust with our residents through our community policing model. Residents are able to safely engage with the department through easy online services like crime reporting and vacation watch requests. Our school resource officers are developing relationships with our youth at a time when human connection is needed the most. It is a new day in Highland Village.
This year saw the retirement of our long-tenured city manager, Michael Levitt, who led us through the development of our economic corridor and brought us to where we are today. It is a new day in Highland Village as we welcome our new city manager, Paul Stevens.
Since I began in September, I've seen our staff tirelessly serve our residents. New businesses have opened, and the city has welcomed families into three new housing developments. We mourned the loss of Sergeant Dennis Oliver, and this city came together in support of his family and our employees. We remembered the faithful service of Highland Village's son with the dedication of the Aaron M. Hudson Memorial Bridge.
This past year has been one we will never forget. The resiliency and strength shown by our community is proof we can confidently look forward to our future. We are stronger and better. It is a new day in Highland Village.
The what?
You should have fist bumped it.
So, the hats off and thank yous to Andrew and Laurie. And y'all know, every year, they do a, they work wonders, they work miracles in putting together our State of the City video. And it couldn't be done without those two. And so, this year, because of COVID, it was short and sweet, but I think it told our story well. Next year, just be ready. Because it'll be my last one, and it's going over the top, COVID or no COVID. Yeah, so, anyway. All right, we're gonna move right along to the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered for approval by single motion and vote without discussion. Each council member has the option of removing an item from this agenda, so it may be considered separately and/or adding any item from the action agenda to be considered as part of the consent agenda items. Number 11, consider approval of minutes of the regular city council held on February 23rd, 2021, and a special work session held on February 25th, 2021. Number 12, consider ordinance 2021-1281, re-adopting in its entirety Article 14.04 Parks and Recreation, Division 7, Youth Service Standards of Care of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Highland Village, setting forth and adopting the standards for care of youth, for youth programs offered by the Parks and Recreation Department. This is the second and final read. Number 13, consider resolution 2021-2934, canceling the March 23rd, 2021 city council meeting. Number 14, consider resolution 2021-2935, authorizing the sale of a firearm pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 61.4.051 to Lieutenant Robert Doyle on the occasion of his retirement from the Highland Village Police Department. Number 15, receive budget reports for period ending January 31st, 2021. Counsel, what's your, yes, Robert?
Make the motion, we approve agenda items 11 through 15 as read.
Thank you.
I have a second.
We have a second by Mr. Heslip. All in favor, counsel, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign, carry 7-0. So, we are going to, well, we're gonna move on, and we're gonna have to go back into closed session. So, here's my question.
Yes, you'd have to read it again.
No, 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 that was not my question. Should, can we go ahead and do number 17 in the late work session?
If you want to do that now.
Now, and then we can come back, yeah, because we still have to come back out.
Yeah.
So, so we will...
But yes, you'll have to read the closed session.
Yes, and I'll still read it, I'll read it again. So, we're gonna do 17 status reports on current projects and discussions on future agenda items. Counsel, does anyone have anything that, yes, Barbara?
I don't know whether this is the right place to address this or not, but the Flower Mountain Republicans Club, holding their annual forum for candidates, and there's been a lot of discussion going on. They're holding it tonight. They have held it on this same date for several years. And they are not looking at changing it for any reason. So, I would like for us to explore the possibility of requesting that Highland Village not be considered on their platform since it is a regularly scheduled council meeting. If it were Flower Mountain Council Meeting, I don't think they would be having the debate that night, or presentation that night of candidates. So, I would like discussion, and if there was something we could do. Can we just ask them to please, that we would rather not?
Well, let me, and I, so we don't get into a substantial discussion of this since it's not on the agenda. All I'm gonna say is, one, that's a separate organization from the city. Two, it involves candidates and their individual decisions with respect to the conflicts of the schedule. So, you know, I don't, I'm not sure that the city council, I guess you could, possibly later meeting, decide to make, have the city council make a formal request, but to not include, you know, Highland Village races in that forum, if you wish, to take that action just as a statement of the council. Ultimately, of course, it's the individual candidates, whether they're council members or not, who have the, you know, are gonna have the discretion to decide whether or not they want to attend. And the organization certainly has the discretion to decide what they want to do with that.
Okay, thank you. Well, and I will just interject just two seconds, two things, how much I appreciate our councilmen recognizing their responsibility to the council and for being present at this council meeting. I know that there was that conflict, and I really do appreciate Mike and Tom's dedication to the council and to the city of Highland Village, and for attending the council meeting and not, not the forum. So, thank you, guys. Anybody else?
Talking about current projects, Scott, I guess, left here. He was probably the person to answer this, maybe you can answer it, Paul. Along Brazos Boulevard, there's a lot of spray paint and tubing. What's going on?
They are doing some boring for some gas line work. I could give you some more specifics if you'd like, but that's essentially what they're, what they're doing.
Thank you.
Close serve doesn't want to talk to us?
They do not. What they put out was essentially the statement they had put out to cities. They did say if we, if we had specific questions, they would address those, but as far as coming to a meeting, no.
That's all you need to know.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? Okay, with that, we are gonna go back in to closed session under Section 551.074, Personnel Deliberate Employment Evaluation of City Manager and City Secretary at this time, and it is 8:05. 8:0, yes, we will go back in in two minutes. You better hurry. You better hurry.
We are back out of closed session and we are going to take action on matters discussed in closed session under Section 551.074, personnel deliberate the employment evaluation of city manager and city secretary. And I believe we have a motion. Mr. Kixmiller?
Yeah, I move to amend the city secretary's employment agreement to increase the annual contribution to her 401A plan account from $5,000 to $7,000.
And we have a second. All in favor say aye. And those opposed same sign. Carry 7-0. And with that, we are adjourned at 8:37.